Michael, do we have a quorum?
Richard, yes, we just, I just figured out, we've got seven right now, seven planning board members. We've got Richard Hyman, Daniel Finger, Holly Hasbrook, James Arnt, Reenie Toback, Robert Barron, and Vincent Kopicy. Any other planning board members that I've missed? Okay, so that's seven, that's a quorum.
Okay, I hope we're gonna have recreation here.
Hey, Bill?
As well.
Yes, who's that?
Gail and Kathleen are on the attendee list, just so you know, and Dwight Douglas.
Yeah, I was gonna go through, I was gonna go through the, oh Dwight Douglas is on there?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, I didn't see him. Dwight just joined, and Kathleen O'Connor just joined. Great, thank you.
This is Gail Katzman, I'm on the call too.
Great, Gail, thank you very much.
Okay, everybody, I am going to call the June 5th meeting, the Planning Board to Order. See the agenda on screen, the next meeting, 7th, August 4th, and September 1st. This is adoption of the revised minutes, there were a couple of revisions.
Richard, we're having, I'm having a lot of difficulty hearing you.
Okay, is this better?
That is better, thank you.
Okay, um, adoption of the revised minutes, does anyone have any additional revisions to the minutes of the May 5th meeting?
Richard, can we go back to the dates for one minute? Um, with the county's reopening of, on June 15th, which I'll get to in my remarks, we are still gonna be doing teleconferencing, so I'm gonna suggest that our July meeting, July 7th, actually be nine o'clock in the morning, just to make it easier for folks if they're still gonna be home. If folks want it at 8:30, let us know that.
Anyone have a problem with moving it to nine o'clock?
Nine o'clock it is.
Okay, nine o'clock Tuesday. Someday we'll be able to meet in person again. Okay, again, any further revisions to the minutes? Okay, hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the revised minutes of May 5th?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Who is that?
Who is that?
Daniel Finger.
Daniel Finger, okay, second, please.
Rob Barron, so moved.
Rob Barron, second, all, well, I guess we gotta call the roll.
I'm gonna do roll call, uh, this is Bill Brady, uh, Richard Hyman?
Aye.
Uh, I don't think Bernie Tomes, is Bernie on yet? No, Dwight Douglas? Dwight's on there, Dwight? Minutes? I think I heard an aye, and again, if, if, everyone on the call?
They're starting to start drumming, they need to mute their, their speaker.
Great, thank you, if anyone's on the call, please mute yourself. I'm gonna continue now, Daniel Finger?
Aye.
Holly Hasbrook? Holly, uh, vote on the minutes?
Aye.
I think I heard an aye, James Arnt? James Arnt?
Aye, aye.
Thank you. Uh, Reenie, Reenie Toback?
Okay, hold it, hold it, hold it, hold it, hold it, hold it. Everyone's gotta, everyone's gotta go on mute, too much interference will never get anywhere with it like this. Unmute when your name is called, or you speak otherwise, unmute it, please.
All right, I'll start again, Reenie Toback? All right, I'll move on. Robert Barron?
Aye.
Um, I haven't heard that, I haven't heard Jimena Franchella yet? No, not in attendance. Uh, Ca- Kathy O'Connor? Kathy from Parks?
Kathy, you have to unmute.
Here.
Great, uh, vote on the minutes?
Except.
Um, I'll wait a second, Gail Katzman for you, Grecian?
Aye.
Great, and Vincent Kopicy?
Aye.
Great, thank you, everybody.
Okay, can everybody, who's ever running the show, please, everyone unmute, except for me at the moment? Okay, thank you, uh, actually, I don't, it's chairman's report, so I'm gonna save my remarks to the referrals. Now, you can unmute the commissioner, please, commissioner's remark.
Good morning, everyone. So, I, I started mentioning that the county is gonna be officially reopening its buildings on June 15th. Each of the departments is going, is putting together plans for our own reopening. Um, they recognize that each of the departments is very different, so we all have to put together our own reopening plans that we have to submit by next Monday. Um, visitors will be allowed in the building, but only if they have scheduled appointments. Only if they have scheduled appointments, if they're willing to, they have to wear masks, and they have to be, uh, willing to answer some health questions where the data will not be recorded, but we just wanna be sure that the people walking in the building are healthy. Uh, we will continue for quite, you know, some time, at least for foreseeable future. We will continue with, um, teleconferencing of meetings, or videoconferencing of meetings as appropriate, um, and as well, we will continue allowing some staff to telework from their own homes or from other places, particularly those people that have, those staff that have school-aged children, those staff that have to rely on public transportation, particularly those that come up from New York City, because New York City's public transit is still limited to just essential employees until they get to Phase 2. So again, we're, we're putting together our own plan, but for the foreseeable future for our department, it is likely to continue, we'll have a couple more people inside, but otherwise, it's gonna continue as we've been working for the last couple of months. Um, really quickly, I just wanna give you a census update, since we last met on, on May 5th. Um, we've gone up 3.6% for the total county, which is, you know, a little over 0.1% a day, which these days is a good increase. Uh, we are now at 61.7% of our response. We are, um, we are about, I think I said, we're about 6, 5, um, 6.3% away from our, where we were in 2010. Uh, the United, the national rate as a whole is about 5.9% off, New York State is almost 9% off, so we're doing better than the state rate, not as well as, as the national, but overall, our response rate is better than the national. We have eight municipalities now with responses over 70%, it's, that's really good. Um, actually, a number of them are actually all over 75%. Um, our low is still the city of Mount Vernon, who is now up to 47.5%. Scars still is our high at 77.2%. Um, two municipalities have already exceeded their 2010 response rate, but 25 of the communities are less than 5% away from that 2010 response rate, and the other 16 are between 5% and 13.2%. Um, Grasslands continues to be our problem area, but I have now made contact and, and have been emailing back and forth with the col- with the medical center, um, and so they are gonna work with us to reach out to all the staff who live on the housing at the campus there, um, to make sure that they know, uh, that, you know, it's time for them to focus on answering, you know, responding to the census. So hopefully, we'll get some major improvement in, for Mount Pleasant with that response, you know, with that census tract increasing its response. And then the last two bits of information, um, the Census Bureau is, is doing another recruitment effort, they are looking to fill 1,900 jobs at this point, because their census effort is now going through the end of October. And so many of the college students they thought they had lined up to be able to work for the summer, they're now being told they're actually not gonna start work until August, which isn't gonna work for many of them, because there's, you know, a couple weeks of training, and then they'll start in the field on August 11th, but then if they go back to school, you know, August 20th or thereabouts, they're gonna hit an error, or hit a problem with that, so they are, um, you know, still doing that. And then again, but for those people who have not responded, the Census Bureau staff will start knocking on the doors, they'll start doing that follow-up, no-response follow-up, starting on August 11th. Um, so, you know, we still have, we still have time, we're about 76 days from when they started releasing data and the, and the, um, the census form. With this, you know, with the first 76 days. That's it for me, Richard.
Can I ask a quick question, it's Kathy?
Sure.
Um, Norma, how would they, are they, if they're still looking for people to work, can you just shoot the contact? I have people in my neighborhood that are looking for work, so, um, very with it people that could certainly handle this. So, um, would you be able to just name, thank you? Thank you, thank you.
Okay, any other comments on the census? Okay, again, we'll go to the ratification of actions taken by staff in response to planning and zoning actions referred to the County Planning Board April 16th, 2020 through May 15th, 2020. Does anyone have any comments on referrals?
I need to confuse myself for the three peak skill projects, this is Dwight.
Okay, Dwight, anyone else have any comments?
Um, hi, this is Holly, I have, um, some questions about the North Castle, the 100 Business Park Drive project. Um, is this something that the town approved? Does any, uh, Lucas, do you know?
Uh, well, we, well, we saw this a long time ago, and I, I believe it was 2007, um, and I don't know if that was approved back then, um, but they came back with something kind of new, yet similar this time around. Um, and so it, I mean, this was, this hasn't been approved yet, I mean, it was just a referral.
So I just wanted to comment, since 2007, a lot of additional traffic has been added to that one location. Um, there's just one way in and one way out, and since 2007, they've added ballfields, tennis courts, an Equinox Gym, a White Plains Hospital outpatient center, and there's, there's a lot of accidents at that, that intersection. Um, so I just thought it might be, um, a good idea to do some kind of a traffic study there, because ideally, um, that seems like that would be a good location for a warehouse, but, um, that is like the one bottleneck spot of traffic in the hamlet of Armunk, and I do see a lot of accidents there.
Okay, um, well, I mean, to be honest, like, this, this project has a lot of issues in the sense that they're, they wanna build this building in a, in a flood zone.
Right.
Um, and that was kinda why it never went forward the first time around. Um, so, but that, it's good to know that the, the traffic issue is also, you know, if there's a lot of vehicular crashes over there, then that would be, you know, another thing to look at.
Yeah, because it's such a long light there, people try to beat the light, and there's always, you know, there's a lot of accidents there, yeah.
Right, you're talking about the, the traffic signal at, at Business Park Drive, and what's the other street? I don't have a map in front of me.
Uh, Maple going into Armunk, because you also have the school buses going into, um, the high, uh, the junior high school there and into town on one side, and then you've got all the office buildings, you've got La Quinta, you've got, um, Equinox Gym, you've got White Plains Hospital, you've got ballfields and tennis courts going in on the other side, so it's, it's a lot of traffic coming in and out of that one, you know, there's only one way in and one way out.
Right, I see what you're saying. Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Um, okay, thank you, Holly.
We'll, we'll, we'll put your note in the file, and then we can, um, if it comes back again, we will note that.
Yeah, okay, thank.
Also, why don't you keep an eye on how it goes at North Castle, to see if they are in fact taking that into consideration?
I'll do that.
Okay, anyone else have any comments? Okay, I have one on Peak Skill River View Place Associates. My comment is similar to what I had on the Tarrytown Y project and the 30 Broad Street project in Torchester. When developers are tearing down occupied buildings that currently contain, most likely, in this case, as in the others, affordable housing, and there is no relocation plan, where they just appear to be, when the lease is over, you're out on the street, that I don't think that's an appropriate, uh, process that, uh, this board or any board should, uh, sign onto. So I am opposed to, and you should note, that I am opposed to the River View Place Associates project, assuming that there is no relocation provided to the families, the four families. And in addition, there's a second proposal in the future, which would have 14 families, uh, their current housing eliminated. So I think we need to take that into account when we send our letters. I know Dwight is, uh, cued, so I don't know if he, if he can provide us any information, if that's appropriate, or just, uh, just take my comment, so I am opposed to River View Place Associates, uh, proposal. Are there any other comments?
I just want, uh, Richard, I just, I wanna let you know, this is Lucas, I just wanna let you know that from now on, we're making it a standard practice when we, when we review these referrals. If any units are existing on the site now, we are reaching out to the municipality and asking them what the deal is in terms of those relocations, so we're gonna have that information before we write any future letters that, um, involve situations like this.
That's good, particularly since these units being demolished are affordable units, so we're losing a fort, we lost affordable units in Torchester, in Tarrytown, they say they're going to relocate everyone, so if they, if they meet their commitment, then that'll be okay, but, uh, that's gonna be difficult. Okay, any other comments on referrals? Okay, I forget, do we take a motion to, uh, ratify the actions?
I'll move, this is Dwight.
Okay, is her second?
I'll second, it's James.
Call the roll?
I will call the roll, you can hear me, this is Bill.
Yes.
Thank you, uh, Richard Hyman?
Uh, I accept your peak skill 2002. And what is happening on the background? Please.
Great, and I think a cause of that feedback is when people have both two different phones on, they have their computer phone on, and their, their computer audio and their phone on. So if you've got a laptop, turn it, turn down the audio on your laptop if you wanna use your phone, thank you. All right, here we go, um, I didn't see Bernie Tomes, so I'm gonna go to Dwight Douglas? Daniel Finger?
Aye.
Holly Hasbrook?
Aye.
James Arnt? Reenie Toback?
I cannot unmute.
Yes, you, we can hear you.
Oh, good, okay, thank you, yes.
Thank you, Reenie, Robert Barron?
Aye.
Um, I haven't seen Jimena Franchella? Okay, uh, Kathy O'Connor?
Aye.
Gail Katzman?
Aye.
And Vincent Kopicy?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Okay, next we have, um, matter of important discussion, draft planning board report of the 2021 capital project requests. Going to be doing the presentation?
Richard, I'm gonna start this by introducing our budget director and our deputy budget director, Larry Sol and Gideon Grandy, to talk, to, just to give an overview, as the board had requested at your last meeting, to give an overview about the budget process and, uh, the, the county's budget itself, so that you have a sense, again, a reminder about what your role is, um, but versus the county's bigger picture, what the county will be doing with the capital budget. So Larry or Gideon, welcome to our meeting, and, um, I'll let you guys take it over from here.
Okay, thank you, good morning, this is Larry Sol, county budget director, also, as I mentioned, Gideon Grandy, deputy budget directors, also on as well. Um, so I'm gonna give, you know, a brief overview, I, uh, of the financial situation as it stands right now. Obviously, there are a lot of uncertainties, um, so very difficult to predict. Um, but as of, uh, our first quarter forecast, which I presented to the Board of Legislators a few weeks ago, um, we are projecting that our, our largest revenue stream, which is the sales tax, will be down in excess of $100 million for the year, um, with the severest impact, obviously, during April, May, June, and we project a slight improvement, uh, as things start to reopen. But again, um, it depends on a lot, and it depends on consumer confidence and a number of other things that are hard to, to gauge at this point. Um, so it could be worse than that, um, and that, that's the amount of sales tax that we would be losing before we take into account the portion that we share with the local municipalities. So, you know, our, our other revenue streams will be impacted as well, uh, parks fees, um, in addition to bus fares, uh, mortgage recording tax, hotel occupancy tax, those are all relatively smaller revenue streams in the grand scheme of things, uh, are two, we have a $2.1 billion budget, um, and so, uh, you know, the sales tax, we don't project it to come back to where we budgeted it to be this year, until maybe three years out at this stage. Um, and, you know, the last recession we had in 2008 and 09, essentially, it took three or four years for our sales tax to come back to where it was. Uh, so, so needless to say, um, you know, that, that's, uh, it's gonna be very challenging from a budget standpoint, and, um, you know, we've already taken some actions to try to address that, um, some of the things that we didn't want to do, and we didn't propose to do in the budget, we've, we, we had, um, um, budgeted to add $10 million to our unrestricted reserves or rainy day fund, we've, uh, reversed that, we've also have approval from the Board of Legislators to bond for tax sursheraries, which we, we did not, um, include in the budget, but had been done in, in past budgets. We also, um, received approval to defer a portion of our pension under the, um, pension stabilization program. And so, um, the good news is that we didn't put those things in our budget, because we were conservative, and you shouldn't do those things during good times, these are obviously extraordinary times right now. Um, and then we're going to have significant additional expenses related to dealing with the pandemic, um, you know, but our, but that is not my biggest concern, because we do have federal money for this year to address those expenses. It's really the revenue loss that's the biggest, um, issue as far as we're concerned, and none of the federal money at this point can be used to, um, backfill for lost revenue. Um, and all of the money, you know, that we've been allocated from the federal government, it, 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 there's nothing that continues into next year at this point. So, so while we, you know, may be able to manage our way through this year's, uh, situation financially, um, it's next year where there's gonna be a real problem, because we're gonna start with a lower number in terms of our sales tax, and, you know, we, we can't count on the federal stimulus money. And the other real unknown is what the state's going to do. Um, we estimate that if they follow through on the, um, $8.2 billion cut that they had in their revised financial plan in, in aid to localities, that we, we could be impacted, you know, anywhere from $65 million to in excess of $100 million. And so we hope they don't follow through on that, um, because, you know, the only way that we have to deal with that, I mean, there's, there are no good options, let's put it that way, to address a situation like that. Um, and the fact is that we deliver, um, you know, the majority of what we do are state-mandated, as well as federally mandated programs that the state delegates down to us. So it just, you know, really doesn't make a whole lot of sense for the state to cut funding for constitutionally mandated programs, uh, which are, really, most of them are mandated within the state constitution, so they're not gonna cut benefits, but they're gonna cost shift to us, and that, that's a big concern that we have, um, as, as far as our budget this year, as well as next year. So, so that, that remains to be seen. So I'm not trying to depress everyone, I mean, um, but this is the reality of the situation, and so we're looking at all options right now, and, you know, how the capital budget plays into this, I mean, our debt service, um, for the general fund is somewhere around, uh, $130 million, and then we add another $50 million, uh, for the, for the sewer districts, and Gideon, correct me, you, you'll, I'm sure you'll correct me if I'm off on those numbers, but, um, you know, so, so our debt service at, relative to our whole, our entire budget, um, is within manageable levels. And quite frankly, I'll be honest, we haven't been so concerned about that in the past, because the county only had so much capacity to get projects out the door. But now that we're, you know, focusing on clearing the backlog, and, and some of the backlog is, is real, some of it's just perceived, because some of that prior appropriation, really, some of those projects just need to be closed out, and they've been carried forward year after year. And so we're making some progress in cleaning up our budget. Um, our department has become more involved in the last few years under the current administration, working with the Capital Work Group, where all projects go before, which includes, uh, Planning Department, includes the Law Department, um, includes the DPW Transportation Department. So we review all of these projects. So what you're gonna see today is really what the departments have requested, and we've tried to give them parameters even before they submit their request, but, I mean, quite frankly, um, you know, these, this list that you see today is not necessarily going to be the final list that is submitted to the Board of Legislators, this may get weaned back, thing, you know, so we try to look at priorities. But the other side of the coin with capital also is that it, it's job creation within the county. It's not only job creation, but it's also necessary, um, if anyone's driven on the Bronx River Parkway, they, they know that is sadly in need of, of repair, and we can't let our infrastructure crumble, it only becomes more expensive down the road, and, um, so we can't, we can't ignore it. Um, so you may be asking, why are we adding $287 million of appropriation when we have, you know, so much that's carried forward? Well, there's changing priorities, there's things that have to be done, there's, you know, EPA mandates and things of that nature, um, and so we'll be reviewing all of these projects with the county executive and determining, you know, uh, priorities, um, for them. So, um, you know, but I do think we need to be cognizant of the impact that debt service is gonna have on the budget as we move forward, um, and with some, you know, typically, what we'll do is we'll say, this is the amount of debt service that we can afford, and so our projects need to fit within that. But the other reality is that what you see before you today, that debt service isn't going to, um, happen until two, three, some, in some cases, four years down the road. We, you know, issue bonds once a year, so what we issue for this year will be money that we've spent on projects that may have been approved, you know, several years ago. So we need to project that forward as well. I mean, the good news is that the interest rates are low, we can borrow, our credit rating is still strong, you know, but the fact is, even if interest rates were zero, we still have to pay back the principal part of it. And on average, you know, that, the, the length of time we take to pay back the debt depends on the useful life of the project, it's in state local finance law, basically dictates, based on the type of project, how long we can go out on the bonds. We typically go out shorter, um, than we're allowed to, and we pay it off sooner. Um, so, uh, but on average, you know, if you averaged it across the board on all projects, usually it's about 10 years, um, to, you know, to amortize the debt on a project. Um, so, you know, all things are on the table at this point, all options are on the table to address the, the current situation, we've been meeting with the county executive, we, we're monitoring the revenues, uh, the sales tax, to see, you know, if our projections are holding true. So far, you know, April was down in excess of 30%, which is to be expected, everything was shut down. The only bright spot probably was e-commerce, which was up slightly, but not tremendously. Um, and grocery sales were up, but that's largely a non-taxable item, um, for the most part. So, um, so we certainly have our work cut out for us, I mean, the budget process, as far as the operating budget, is gonna be kicking off, I'll be sending out a letter to the departments, which will give parameters. Um, you know, there will be, you, you know, we will not be allowing new positions, we, you know, filling positions are gonna be done on a very limited basis, it has to be life, health, safety, um, if it's something to deal with COVID, you know, we obviously give that a priority. Um, and, you know, the other things we're looking at in terms of the federal money are community programs that don't necessarily benefit our budget, but may benefit the overall economy, because five, you know, end of August, when the moratorium on evictions and foreclosures expires, there's gonna be a lot of people that are gonna owe a lot of rents, back rent. rents. So we're looking at different programs. There's other HUD money that we have, you know, that's limited in terms of income and so forth. So we're, we're, you know, walking, chewing gum and doing cartwheels at the same time right now. So certainly, we have great people here at the county, so I'm confident that we're going to, we're going to, you know, get through this situation. But, you know, that, I could go on and on here, I'm sure you don't want to hear me talk ad nauseam, so I certainly am happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions? I do have one question. There is about $981,000,000 of previously approved capital projects that have neither been obligated or expended. I assume they have not been bonded either, is that correct?
Um, not necessarily, no. There could be, I, I'll let Gideon answer that, he may have a little more detail on it. But no, they could potentially be projects that were, that have, when we say bonded, you know, bond authorization, it doesn't mean that we've necessarily gone to the market for the bonds.
I meant to the market.
Yeah, no, we, we, no, typically, there, there may be, yes, there may be some, but largely that is not our practice. Our practice has been, in the past, that we only issue bonds for money that we have actual contracts encumbered, and that we know, you know, that that money's going out the door relatively soon for, for a particular project. So we don't bond in advance and then the money, you know, sits in the bank and earns zero because that, that we'd have, we pay more on the bonds than what we earn. So, so there may be bond authorization for a number of those projects, but they're, you know, very limited in terms of the amount that have actually been issued. I mean, some of those may actually be ongoing projects. But I would say, you know, not money that we've, not money that's sitting in the bank waiting to be spent.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Anyone else have any other questions?
This is Rob. Other, is the county looking at, at expanding any, or identifying new revenue streams? I know like the, New York State is allowing New York City to institute congestion pricing, so that's going to be, you know, a billion dollars for their, for the MTA. Any kind of things like that in the county?
Well, I mean, our, yeah, we, we have, you know, fewer options than, say, the city or the state has because they have an income tax, which we don't have. So we just last year raised the sales tax one percentage point. So I, you know, now we're at the same level as most other counties, so that's not an area, you know, I know you said new revenue streams, you know, I think everything is on the table at this point, in terms of looking at both the revenue and the expense side. But, you know, that becomes difficult to impose new taxes and fees when we're potentially going to be i- in a recession. It's, you know, so I think that will be certainly part of the dialogue. But, you know, we don't currently have, you know, a lot of options as far as, you know, additional revenue streams most likely would have to be approved by the state. And that's like a third rail, you know, especially at this point. So, you know, but that's a good question.
Any other, any other questions? If not, we can go ahead with the presentation.
Great, thank you very much, Larry. This is Bill Brady in planning. We're just going to go to the next slide, Michael. You can hear me, right? Thank you very much. Just to touch on what the Planning Board's role is, we just want to remind you that you have a draft Planning Board Report, which focuses on the physical aspects of capital projects in the five-year plan, but with a particular focus on the next year, which is 2021. The Planning Board is required to submit its, your report by September 10th, though we hope to approve it in July, after we hear some more comments from you. From there, it goes to the County Executive and the Budget Director and the Capital Projects Committee. During the summer, Larry mentioned that the Capital Work Group reviews the projects and makes recommendations on projects that may be either pushed out or slimmed down perhaps, or even added. Next slide, Michael. Immediately, we want you to send us any additional questions, either in writing or even a phone call, and we'll, by June 23rd, so that's a couple of weeks out. We hope to get those in time so that we can send back to you a revised draft Planning Board Report, a week, a week before the July 7th Planning Board Meeting. And at that meeting, you have the option to adopt the Planning Board Report. We then transmit the Planning Board Report to the Capital Projects Committee, which includes the County Executive and the Board of Legislators and various commissioners. From there, the County Executive submits his proposed capital budget to the Board, and then he submits it to the Board of Legislators. The Board of Legislators then reviews and makes any additions or subtractions. And then by the end of the year, the budget, the capital budget is approved. Next slide. Every year, we try to give you an idea about how this year's totals match up with the past few years. Again, this is what's been requested as of May 1st. And if you look at the, so 2021 is at the right, the total cost, as Larry mentioned before, 287 million has been requested from the various departments this year. Going back in time, you see, we were in the 284, 283, 239, 314 last year, and now we're back at 287 total requests. And in the middle there, you see non-county shares, and the bottom level is the county share. Next slide. A quick breakdown of just the 2020 run, 2021 requests. If we look at how the difference between the taxing districts and what, and the capital projects that would just be coming out of the county's tax levy. The districts include the refuse districts, sewer and water districts, and the county airport. Again, there's our total for this year requested, that 287 total. The districts this year are requesting 145 million with a balance for the tax levy of 141 million, almost 142 million. Okay, next slide. This is yet another table, wrapping the tables up. This is a summary of the requests by the categories that are in the capital Planning Board Report and how they're categorized in the, in this capital system. General, including buildings, in that, in that buildings category on the left are also all the smaller, smaller departments like planning and IT, and labs and research and corrections and on and on, are all squished into that buildings category. That's why it's the largest. We've also got separate categories for Parkway, Rosenbridges, Recreation and Transportation. And at the bottom, you see those three different taxing districts, Airport, Refuge, and Sewer and Water. And again, that's a summary of this year's requests.
Bill?
Yeah.
What's the difference between continuing and new projects?
Yeah, that's another, that's another aspect of this table. Continuing projects, those are projects that are existing projects that requests are made, either additional funds for the next, a next phase of a project, or money's needed for cost escalation. The next column, new projects for 2021, those are projects that we'd never seen before. There are new, new projects that had either already been in the program, coming in from outer years, a new project, or a brand new project, which is rare, but they, there are some new, new projects that had, hadn't been in the five-year program. Those are included in those 32 projects there for 2021. Okay, Michael, next slide. So we're going to go through the different departments, we're going to jump around a little bit. We've got some, thankfully, some staff from several departments to help us go through the different categories. And we're going to start with Public Works and their Buildings Projects. And I think that's the next slide. And I believe Robert Abmont from the Department of Public Works and Transportation is going to jump in there and give you, what we'll be doing is, we're going to give a little brief little description of these projects. You can jump in and ask a question. Sometimes you'll see, we highlighted in red where projects are cost escalation, you'll see that. And what we're doing is breaking out, the first slides that you'll see are continuing projects, projects that are existing, and these are just a next phase or additional funds. And then we'll, in that category, have a separate slide for new projects in 2021. So thank you, Robert, you there?
Yes, good morning. Robert Abmont from the Department of Public Works and Transportation. The first project referenced is B0082, Low-Rise Building Renovations, White Plains. The 2021 request is to address improvements to the first and second floor of the building and include supplemental heating, ventilation and air conditioning upgrades. The second project, B0110, the County Asset Management Plan, this is a continuation, this represents phase two of the project. It's continuing to input asset data or mechanical, electrical systems, building data into an asset management program. The first phase is underway. This will help us in better determining our future capital needs and programming accordingly. B0120 is feasibility studies. That is a general project to help also develop the capital program where we feel we don't have enough information on a particular project that a study might be of value to do preliminary concepts and that out the project and provide better information. Capital Project B015C, Interior Infrastructures in the White Plains Complex, that is additional funding, and it addresses the steam lines in the McCallion Office Building. And the additional funding is based on current cost estimates. The 2021 New Projects Requests, the first project listed is B0114, Infrastructure Rehabilitation at the Valhalla Campus. This is replacing the 15 kilovolt manhole cable racks that are camp, along the campus wide. That is our feeder system, our electrical feeder system up at the campus, and also includes upgrades to, of the building management system in the DPW Operations Building. B0122, Electrical Substation SE21. This project, this project will take the existing switch gear and, existing switch and transfer gear that is currently inside a building up at the campus and relocate it outside. The equipment is original to the system and it's passed its useful life. B00115 addresses infrastructure rehabilitations at the Mount Vernon District Office. This is upgrades to the warded storage tank system and rehabilitation of the sidewalks around the building. B0117 is infrastructure repairs at the 450 Sawmill River Road where our Board of Elections has offices and the parks offices are located. This will address replacement of the fire service utility line, rehabilitation of the curtain wall, storefront and windows of the building. B014E, Exterior Repairs at the White Plains Complex. This addresses the sidewalks, driveways, loading dock driveways around the several buildings that are comprised the White Plains Complex, including the MOB, the Richard Duronco Courthouse, the low-rise building, 112 East Post Road, and 143 Grand Street and 85 Court Street. B015E, Infrastructure Repairs at the White Plains Complex. This is focused at the Richard J. Duronco Courthouse, the annex. It includes replacement of the courthouse doors, courtroom doors, excuse me, and upgrades to the courtroom return air system and associated work. B035E is a continuing, a continuing project. This is the next five-year phase of the replacement of our equipment that is responsible for maintaining the county road system. In 2021, we're looking at a bucket truck, two crash attenuated trucks, and two skid steers with associated attachment.
Hi, we're going to jump to, this is Bill again, we're going to jump to those miscellaneous departments, some small and some not so small. Michael, next slide. This is a list of actually two different departments on one slide. The first one is the BDA02 District Attorney Information Technology, $710,000 for the purchase upgrade and maintenance of equipment, software and systems to support the DA's various office locations throughout the county. The 2021, 2021 request will fund the replacement of LPR storage equipment, backup systems for the DA, email and forensic towers. The next projects are three continuing projects requested by the Department of Public Safety. BPS26 for $90,000 is for improvements to the Special Operations Division Garage at the Valhalla Campus, including the replacement of all roofing and insulation. BPS29, new Special Operations Division, SOD Vehicle Storage Facility. This is $7.4 million, in addition to an already appropriated $6.1 million for design and construction. This is additional funds for construction for a new 6,500 square feet heated vehicle storage facility to house special ops vehicles and equipment, and the relocation of existing Special Operations Division offices currently located in trailers at that site. BPS30 includes $250,000 in cost escalation for the expansion of the existing impound lot up at the Paul Thorne Headquarters Building off the Sawmill Parkway, to expand the lot by 6,000 square feet and the resurfacing of the existing lot. The project also, will also include the construction of a new 5,000 square foot prefabricated, unheated storage structure and necessary site work. Next slide. This is a request by the Department of Emergency Services. They're requesting one new project in 2021, BES20, $3.9 million to replace and upgrade the emergency services, emergency generator that provides backup power to their facility at the Valhalla Campus at Grasslands. And obviously, this project is critical to maintain emergency services operations at that location. Next slide. A project from Social Services is requesting one new project in 2021, BSS17, $7 million for the renovation and repurposing of Valhalla, of the Valhalla Residence on Hammond House Road at Grasslands, for the use as a 19-bed shelter for homeless seniors with disabilities. This building has not had any significant renovations since 1996, and it has not been occupied and has had minimal maintenance for many years. The project will also include an elevator for those residents, those disabled senior homeless residents. DSS has noted that some of the residents may be transitional, while others may be permanently housed at the residence.
Bill, does this building have any historic quality?
Uh, no, but we would, not that I know of. It may be eligible for the National Register, but we'll, we'll take a look at that and we'll work with HPAK. Again, they see all the capital projects year to year, and we go over with them the different projects, particularly older buildings like this too. All right, next slide, Michael?
I think Anthony Zano had a question or comment.
Okay. I can't, I can't hear him.
No, Michael, unmute me, Michael.
No, now we hear you, Anthony.
Okay, so, okay, so this building, in addition, was added to this building, I believe in 1996. The original home does have some significant historical elements, like it has, there's a piece of Tiffany glass actually in this building, but we already added an addition. So, but if it, if there's any historic significance to it, will, it'll be addressed in the, in the project.
Great, thank you, Anthony. Thanks. All right, next slide, Michael, thank you. The Department Correction has several projects, we'll go through those. Several continuing projects, existing projects with 2021 requests, starting with BCR55, $200,000 for cost escalation for the replacement of security windows and associated interior and exterior repairs, including masonry facade restoration. And that's G block, that's in the G block. BCR50, BCR56 F Unit Roof Replacement, $125,000 for the replacement of roofing along with associated mechanical, electrical work. This is also for cost escalation. BCR57, Headquarters Rooftop Air Handling Unit Replacement, $95,000 in cost escalation for eight existing rooftop, replacement of eight rooftop air handling units and the demolition of the existing units, rigging, ductwork, connections, electrical work, control work and structural modifications. BCR60, another cost escalation, $175,000 HVAC improvements and upgrades. At first phase, we'll address the G and K blocks of the jail and preliminary design for the women's unit. BCR61, it's actually a new project, so it should be on the next page with the new projects, but this is the parking structure infrastructure improvements. It includes one- It includes $1.225 million for the design phase of the renovation of the Department of Corrections parking structure. Not only is this rehabilitation of the structure, but it also includes a replacement of the existing lighting system with any energy efficient LED lighting. And DBW also can provide any other additional information on the age of the structure and the number of spaces at the garage if needed.
Yeah, why don't, why don't you?
Sure, sure. Robert, were you able to get those figures?
Yes, the structure was built in 1992. The total number of spaces is 672 and the cost per space is approximately $20,800.
Twenty thousand eight hundred, rehabilitation of the spaces?
It's rehabilitation of the structure itself, there's structural deficiencies in the concrete structure.
You're not the building structure going through, this is a rehabilitation of the existing?
That is correct. Joints have to be replaced.
Okay, thank you.
And this, and this structure is for cars of the staff, staff cars? And okay, and there's no price for those on those parking spaces, correct?
That I'm not sure Corrections would have to answer that.
I'd like to find that out if that's possible, please.
Sure, sure. We'll follow up with you, Robert, on that, if there's any fees associated with parking. Okay. Great, great. Okay, um, BCR, the next slide, this is another new project for Corrections. BCR five E, $1 million. This is the first year of a new multi-year cycle of infrastructure improvements, including things such as asbestos abatement and exterior improvements, including roof replacement and exterior waterproofing, as well as upgrades of sanitary, fire safety, plumbing, HVAC, fencing and electrical systems. All right, next slide. Then we move to Labs and Research, which we had at the Planning Board recently for a capital budget amendment. And we'll get into that and that impacts this, the first project. BLR ten, Labs and Research Infrastructure Improvements for $1.2 million. This is for various facilities at Labs and Research located at the Grasslands Campus. Included are both interior and exterior work. The 2021 request will include replacement of uninterrupted power supply in the forensic addition, the addressing, and will also address the heat issue that is reducing the lifespan of batteries and will address water moisture, which is affecting instrument and testing accuracy. That last piece that is familiar to you, as the Planning Board recently approved a capital budget amendment for $600,000 in 2020 to fund the design and construction of those repairs and replacement of the microbiology humidity control equipment, which we're failing and would cause big problems, or already is causing big problems. So when this project's approved by the Board of Legislators, the 2021 request will be reduced by that $600,000. So again, you're seeing 1.2, but part of that 1.2 is what you just discussed as a capital budget amendment in 2020. Next project, a couple more Labs and Research projects. BLR twelve, Facility Rehab and Upgrade. This $500,000 funds a feasibility study for multi-year infrastructure improvements at Labs and Research at Valhalla. The Draft Planning Board Report, which we sent to you, recommends that the study incorporate findings from the forthcoming Valhalla Campus Master Plan, which Planning and DPW and all the departments at the campus are cooperating on and will be completing this year. So the plan, their study will incorporate findings from that Campus Master Plan. BLR two E, Equipment Acquisition, $840,000 for the replacement of individual pieces of equipment in the Toxicology, Forensic and Environmental Divisions at Labs and Research. And they provide a list of very hard-to-pronounce pieces of equipment that they replace annually. And so that's $840,000. And now we're going to go to IT. Thankfully, we've got Marguerite Byrne from IT. I believe, Marguerite, you're on the line, unmuted hopefully.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, Marguerite. Marguerite, thank you.
I think you're doing a great job. You should continue, but in any event.
Oh, thanks.
I just want to thank everyone for taking the time to discuss the IT projects for 2021. The first project is bit thirty two, the radio system replacement. This request, this is a continuing project and this request is for $1.18 million. This is the radio system that is currently being updated. It's used to service the Department of Emergency Services, Public Safety, Public Works and the Department of Transportation, in addition to many of the local municipalities. This system is used by first responders and other governmental personnel to ensure safety of life and property and enable delivery of vital services to the citizens of Westchester. Bit three C, $980,000. This is to replace the aging desktop systems, desktops and laptops and other endpoints that are needed for users to connect to the county. Obviously during this recent pandemic, having newer machines would have been beneficial. We did give out older laptops and people were still able to connect, but we need to be prepared for future work at home. Bit forty one, this is radio tower replacement infrastructure. This project is for those towers that require rehabilitation or replacement before age or wear and tear can reduce reliability to the levels unsuitable for public safety. Telecommunications replacement, $90,000, bit forty four. Couple of years ago, about two, three years ago, the county now has its own infrastructure for voice over IP telephones. This $90,000 is similar to the desktop replacement systems. We are responsible for replacing the phones. Excuse me, someone is talking behind me, so let me get them to please. I apologize. This is to replace the VoIP phones as they break down and to, we have about another 250 phones to still install. That's the $90,000. Bit forty five is building access control. This is for video surveillance system and the access controls. For those of you coming to MOB, you know, we have the access cards to get onto the different floors and again, to upgrade the video surveillance system throughout the county. You were there, bit forty seven. Bit forty seven is for the network security infrastructure upgrade. This is a continuing projects to make sure our network and security infrastructure upgrades are maintained to current levels. Bit forty nine is for $750,000. This is a project we started last year where our initiative is to work with public safety, county public safety, who will be working with local municipalities to have a centralized record management system. Four C is employee productivity systems. This is to allow employee software and hardware for county employees to be more productive. And a recent example is the WebEx Systems, which during the pandemic came in very useful. We are looking to purchase additional license and additional infrastructure for the county. Global Positioning System, seven B is for $140,000. This will provide the tools necessary to interface GPS and ABL, which is Automatic Vehicle Locations and Routing Systems with the GIS applications. This has been used in county police cars, so we know where they are located. New projects. Bit fifty three, Business Continuity and Disaster Recovery, $250,000. This was formerly bit thirty six. This will fund the procurement of equipment required to provide real-time business continuity and timely disaster recovery. Bit fifty four, Critical Communication Logging System, $250,000. This is, so we have required recording for emergency services, public safety. And for some of these systems, we have to maintain the recordings for 21 years. Our last 2021 request is bit sixty. This is a continuation of bit six C and this is to replace the hardware and software systems in the county network. Some of the items we need to upgrade are the current Microsoft Exchange infrastructure. That's it, fighting, I apologize for the disruption.
Great, thank you, thank you, Marguerite. All right, it's Bill again. We've got several projects from the Planning Department, Planning and Property Acquisition. This year, no property acquisition, but we'll go into those, the next slide. Three continuing projects that you're familiar with, BPL one A Housing Implementation or HIV Fund, requesting additional, an additional $10 million this year to provide municipalities with funds for public infrastructure improvements, such as water, sanitary and storm sewer and road and site improvements needed to facilitate the construction or rehabilitation of fair and affordable housing. Through the end of 2019, 592 units funded under HIV are either completed or under construction or have been approved by the Board of Legislators. BPL thirty, New Homes Land Acquisition, requesting $10 million for the acquisition of property for the construction of fair and affordable housing. Other costs may include closing costs, appraisals, property surveys, environmental assessments, hazardous materials reports and the demolition of existing structures. Through the end of 2019, 552 units are either completed, under construction or approved for funding by the Board of Legislators on property acquired through the new use of New Homes Land Acquisition funds.
Bill, this is Richard, have you looked into updating the obligated and expended column?
Um, that, that, we can talk to budget, but again, any kind of lag in that is due to projects that are, have may have been approved and perhaps the bonding hasn't been financed. But basically, and we can provide the board with the list of all the various projects that are approved and in the pipeline, and again, that gap between appropriated and expended obligated, while we're requesting $10 million, incorporating the projects that have already been approved or under construction and perhaps the funds haven't been expended yet and including?
Just provide, just provide the update.
For those two housing projects. And again, same thing with BPL forty, requesting $500,000. There are at least two projects in the pipeline that would need additional funds. And BPL forty, this is for stormwater management projects that are required to comply with federal stormwater regulations and can be used to demonstrate best practices to the municipalities. And so next project, this is the one new project for planning. BPL thirty four, Public Multi-Purpose Facility Improvements. This is a new project for, for public multi-purpose facility improvements in communities throughout the county. These facilities have a variety of programs and services to provide safe, positive and inclusive environments for county residents. The 2021 request, and this is a new project, includes $2.5 million in county funds for improvements proposed to the Boys and Girls Club of Northern Westchester, which is located in downtown Peekskill. It'll help serve children and teens from throughout Northern Westchester. So it's not limited to children and teens in Peekskill, it's for any county residents. Also, in addition to the $2.5 million in county funds, $1.5 million will be funded by the city of Peekskill. All right. And now we're going to go back to Robert Abellmont for parking facilities. Sorry for jumping around, but this is just how the projects are categorized and separated in the capital budget.
Okay, all the parking facilities requests in 2021 are for cost escalation associated with continued deterioration of the parking lots and to address inflation over the course of the years. The first parking project is BPF thirty four, that's White Plains, that addresses the parking lots at 112 East Post Road, 134 Court Street and the MOB surface lot. BPF thirty six is the parking lots at the District Office Buildings and includes the Mount Vernon parking lots that you see there. I'm sorry, that's BPF thirty six is the Mount Vernon parking lots. And BPF thirty four, already talked about in White Plains. Slide. BPF thirty seven is parking lot rehabilitation at the Valhalla Campus. This is for county lots. This includes the lots at the Armory or the Public Safety Training Facility now, the Central Heating Plant, Operations Building and the Public Labs Building. BPF thirty eight is the parking lot at Public Safety Headquarters. Public Works Parkway, P zero zero twenty four. This request moves forward the $4 million that was originally programmed under 2022 and brings it into 2021 for a total requested $8 million. With the removal of the $10 million bond cap, this will help accelerate the Bronx River Parkway Rehabilitation Project. Existing projects, we have RB zero three X, Louisa Street Bridge. This is construction funding. RB oh four B is the Boston Post Road Bridge over Playland Parkway. That is also construction funding.
Excuse me, could I just jump in for a second?
Certainly.
On page forty nine of the report, it gives the breakdown, bridge conditions rating system. Five and above is minor deterioration. Most of the bridges that you're going to be going over have ratings pretty close to five. 4.931, 4.989, 4.5, 4.3, 4.514. But you're proposing not minor deterioration function work, but major construction work. Can you explain why that is the case for each of them?
Yes, good morning, this is Hugh Grecian. I can take that question. The, the bridge rating reports are with the biannual, every two years from the state. They're, they're a general indication, although they do some go into some detail. It also takes into consideration aspects of the bridge you wouldn't think so, like a rating sign or some guide rail up on top. So it's more than just looking at the report and making a judgment there. It's, you know, field visits verifying. That particular job I was out, I just happened to go by two weeks ago and it has some major leakage through the, through the, through the arch. So which is going to deteriorate even more quickly. So we use that as a guide. Bridges that are flagged are inspected every year and normal program. But bridges defined, by the way, anything over 20 feet in span. And then we, we follow that. It's a great indicator. It's very useful to us. But there are other things that come into bringing that project forward.
You want to continue?
Yeah, if you want, I can.
Just go back to, go back to the Playland Bridge.
Yes.
We reviewed that at the Planning Board meeting a year ago or more and we had hoped that the new bridge would somehow be in the design, it's a historic character since you have, apparently you're going to have to knock down the existing bridge. Is that going to be taken into consideration?
Yes, the budget is based on replacement of the bridge, but during design, we will look at the feasibility of repairing the bridge and compare the two.
But if there is a new bridge, hopefully the new bridge design will be consistent with the old bridge design. I know you have to get more away, but.
Correct, but we are looking, correct, and we are looking at the option of can we rehabilitate the bridge instead of replacing it. But the budget is based on the more expensive replacement.
Okay, thank you. Keep going.
You're welcome. RB oh three Z. Let me just sit around, hold on a second. Let me just sit around, hold on a second. This is replacing, excuse me, not replacement, this is, yes, there's removal and replacement of the, not of the bridge, but of the existing asphalt wearing surface waterproofing, there's structural deck rehabilitation, replacement of the existing joint system. Bearings will be replaced, rehabilitation of the undermined footing areas, concrete wing walls, rail systems to be strengthened as necessary. There is some stream channel work, including copper dams, new rip rap, and rehabilitation of the scour locations.
But 2021 is just design, correct?
Correct. Um, RB04C, this is design and construction. This is so funded rehabilitation of the existing structure, replacement of the concrete deck, painting of all existing steel members and associated work. Or D. Again, rehabilitation, it's design and construction, rehabilitation of the existing structure, deteriorate, will address deterioration of the existing arch asphalt approach, resurfacing, waterproofing of the top of the concrete arch, roller sleds and sidewalk replacement and associated work. The Austin Avenue Bridge, this is a design request, it should be 1.4 million in 2021.
Robert, thank you, we'll, we'll make that correction on, on the slide, thank you.
Yep. It's rehabilitation of the existing structure, replacement of the deck joints, bearing pads, concrete deck, painting of these existing steel members, reconstruction of the abutment walls, and associated work. Okay, let me go back to the roads. RB132, the cost escalation, the project is currently in design for Highlander Avenue. It is from East Purchase Street to the Harrison Rite Town Line. Croton Point Avenue, that is rehabilitation of the roadway from the east bridge end to the Croton Point Park entrance.
I see it's just a small amount, but it's, um, the rating was 85.
That's, well. It's, it's, that's the weighted average. So the portion on the bridge itself is not bad, but once you come off of the bridge, the ratings go down to about a 71.
Okay, thank you.
So these, the, that what we're showing there is a weighted average, so the bridge portion tends to bring it up. And then when you get off the bridge, the rating is, was a 71. And we'll design accordingly when we do the roadway rehabilitation.
Go on.
Okay, RB176. This project was moved forward from 2022. We have design funding in 2021, through Bowman Avenue to Main Street.
Okay, as a Portchester resident, I'm glad to see work being done in Portchester. However, at least half of that street has already been completed curb to curb by Con Edison. So you need to take, this is like the fourth time I've mentioned this to various EPW staff. There are portions of it that need to be done, but from, from, pretty much from Regent Street to Bowman is completely done, and other parts have been done as well, so you need to double check that.
Will do. Okay, RB220, this is up at our Valhalla Campus. This is Woods Road, and it's two, it's two county roads, County Road 300 from Dana to Sunshine Cottage Road, then Hammond House Road, County Road 301 from Dana Road to Sunshine Cottage Road, and also Sunshine Cottage Road, which is County Road 301, also from Hammond House Road to the Hospital Service Road. So you can kind of see how they kind of move around in there. And then County Road RB224, North State Road is from Route 100 to the Newcastle-Austen Line.
Great, thank you, Robert.
Can I just ask, sorry.
Oh, go ahead, Robert, yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, um, I just, just a sort of broad stroke comment, which is that, you know, one is, my question is, we're not, according to the way I see all these projects, we're not adding any new lane mileage to any of them, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. The, the second thing is that what concerns me about a lot of these projects is that we're redoing a road without providing any kind of pedestrian or bicycle facility on that road. And so, you know, any obligation that we have towards complete streets, I think is sort of not being sort of kept to.
Robert Barron, um, we do have the opportunity, the planning department does have the opportunity to review the projects and provide comments and discuss with Public Works staff, as well as the consultants, on incorporating, and every road is different, incorporating separated, perhaps just with paint, often with, you know, maybe that's what could be afforded in the project. So for instance, at Grasslands, where there's no sidewalks, we've already given them the heads up that any road improvements up there, we consider areas without sidewalks to have sufficient space for pedestrian passages on the sides. So we do, we do review them, we do, do our best to, within the cost of the project, make recommendations on pedestrian safety and making ways for pedestrians, separated areas, at least by paint, when possible.
Just make sure you include comments to that effect where possible.
Yeah, and, right, we, in the planning board report, we'll take another look, see if we can perhaps strengthen that comment, Robert. And I think we say that throughout, but we will strengthen that comment. And again, you can take a look at it when we send you the revised planning board report.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, back to, now we're up to Parks and Recreation. I believe we also have, we have Commissioner Kathy O'Connor and First Deputy, First Deputy Commissioner Peter Tartaglia on the line, thank you very much. And I don't know if you want to tag team, or Peter's going to go through it?
If we tag team, I'll win, so ha ha. It's Kathy O'Connor, and first of all, thank you, everyone, for all the work that goes into putting this together. Even with everything going on, obviously, our facilities, which I'm sure you've been seeing and witnessing yourself, our facilities are being utilized more than ever. So our requests, as usual, are to, right now, not reinvent the wheel, it's more of, you know, bringing our facilities up to date, because the use is just phenomenal. As we've said over the week, the fact that we had to close Lazden down because of, there was no more parking, we were, we were laughing because we didn't think, most people know where Lazden Park is in summer. So anyway, that being said, thank you. I'm going to turn it over to First Deputy Tartaglia. He oversees our capital program, and certainly we'll be able to explain everything that's going on. So take it away, Pete. Peter?
Can you hear me? Now we can, thank you. Sorry, I was having some technical issues here this morning, I apologize. Thank you, Kathy, thank you, the planning board. Most of our projects, except for a few, are continuing projects, most of them are cost escalations. We probably had the largest backlog of projects in the capital project program. We've also been working very closely with all departments, including Budget and DPW, and have done that, closed out some projects that were lingering for a long time. RP, RCP 10 is the Croton Point Maintenance Facility. We are asking for a cost escalation for 1.6 million for that. Just a little history on that, because I know this board formed up last year, and we, we also had some issues. We went internally and looked at the location of where we were putting that maintenance facility. It was in a wooded area behind the restroom buildings, if anyone knows the facility. The new area is next to the existing building, it's across the parking area behind the RV sites. Our cost escalation, if we needed to, if we were going to go to the original location, was 4.5. Our cost escalation, the reality now is 4.6, and it's a much, much less intrusive project on the very important wooded areas and environmental areas in Croton Point.
Can you send us a site, can you send us a site plan showing where the location is?
We can provide a site plan showing where the location is. We have moved the location, it's basically adjacent to where the maintenance facility is right now, which is, which is adjacent to the existing building. It's across the parking area, it's behind the RV site area, if you know that, if you know the park.
Has the construction started on that?
No. This is, construction cannot start until we get the cost escalation that we're requesting now, which is 1.6. Can you go back to slides? Just to go quickly through these, RGC 12, Golf Course Facility Improvements. Also a cost escalation for the golf course. Current appropriation is 3.3 million, it's for a new facility there. The escalation request is 750,000. Mohansic Maintenance Facility as well as a cost escalation. These projects have been around a very, very long time, many years have gone by, that's why there are cost escalations for them. And then it's the RPL 01, Mechanical Lakes Building Renovation and Site Work. There's, there are some buildings there that need to be removed, they're, they're in poor condition, there is no use for them, and it is a, a public safety and visual nuisance to the, to the, to the facility as well as to the neighbors.
Can I just go back to the Mohansic for a second? I know that facility, since I often slice my drive into that facility on the second hole, and as a maintenance facility, it makes sense, but as a lounge, it's a funny location for a lounge, with a lounge and a kitchen and everything, it's sort of, sort of way out of the way. Has that been looked into as a, I mean, maintenance, sure, but as a lounge?
I, I apologize, I'm having a hard time hearing your audio.
Let me try to give it to you again. As a maintenance facility, the location makes sense, but as a lounge, seems like an unusual location for, for an employee lounge.
Well, it's the maintenance, it's the employees work out of the maintenance building, so it's just part of the, the area where they work out of.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, new projects, there, there are two of them. This one is RCGO 3, Stokes Green Building Demolition. This has been an eyesore and a public safety concern for us on this property. This is for complete demolition of the buildings that are there grading the area, not, not rebuilding any new buildings.
Is that historic, that building?
No, there's no historic.
Sure.
Based on all of the information that we have, it's not, if we, if we need to go take another look at that, we will with Anthony Zano.
Please.
At the planning department. Okay, although this is a new project, this is also a continuing project, it's just that it outlived its, its years. RCP 13, General Infrastructure Vehicle Replacement. We've worked with our capital group that we meet with to get the cost of what we would be putting in for capital dollars each year for vehicle replacement. We have included some in our operating budget, it used to be approximately a million in capital each year, it's now down to about five, it's down to 500 in capital. These vehicles are not chosen by will, we work with DPW on the highest standards and the best vehicles that are out there that can still do the job for what we're asking. They're usually larger vehicles that'll lead to be at a specific park or in our general maintenance division and be moved to different parks as needed.
Can I ask a question, please? Last, last year, when, when the, going back to the vehicle issue, we raised a concern about the, the impact of these large vehicles on pedestrian safety, and I know that that went to some kind of work group that was going to discuss that. Was there, could somebody tell me what the outcome of that was? And if those sort of, any kind of new standards were incorporated into vehicle purchase standards?
I want to defer, we did have a conversation, I'd like to defer to DPW on that, because we do this in concert with them.
Yeah, this is Bill, I, I, we did forward that along to both Public Works and Budget, and I don't know if Commissioner Grecian's still on, we had a recent conversation about that. Hugh, are you there?
Yes, good morning, everybody. Yes, we, we've been, we always work, actually, we, we go as far as daily with national representatives on, on buying the trucks and the latest equipment. Some of that equipment too is with DEF, the larger equipment, I think that's where it came up last year, where some of the, you know, with transfer trucks, I mean, anything we can accommodate for, you know, site, you know, like, for part of the reasons where some, you know, maybe some blind spots are, we will always look into. They, they are big vehicles, there are a lot of things that, that, you know, like we talked about lowering cabs, I believe, and, you know, so we, we take that all in consideration, I, we know, we've been on, we've talked to Commissioner Kupicki about this, and, and again, anything, you know, we, we generally keep up with everything, but if you see something or hear of something, we're certainly, would be grateful to, to look into it. But the general designs of the trucks are kind of what they are, and we, and if we can incorporate any kind of safety features or look into anything further that you would like, we will certainly do that.
Okay, thank you, that is our capital presentation for 2021. Now we go to Playland Specific, which is, has its own larger program. We came to the, this board last year with a much larger, ongoing program. This is to continue that program, and these are the projects for 2021. They are cost escalations to existing projects, as we have now have reviewed every building in that park, most of them are historic. The degradation and the shape of those buildings is, is in pretty bad shape. So we needed escalations to the Playland Structural Restoration, which is a construction funding for an employee services area, which is adjacent to the Ice Casino. It is a continuing program. The Playland Site Improvements, there's a cost escalation of 1 million, that is for the Entrance Plaza and the Fountain Rehabilitation. As part of our ongoing larger parking lot project and recirculation of parking at Playland is RPO 47. This is for the Playland Lot Drainage, as well as the reconstruction of the entire entrance way, so that we can take traffic away from the public, bring the cars in up the circle rather than down the circle, they come down and they go back in. So it'll be a reconfiguration, which is something we've planned and wanted to do for many, many years for the safety of all the people that go to Playland. Any questions?
Great, thank you, Peter.
Thank you, everybody.
Great, thanks. We're going to jump back to DPW Transportation, and I believe we may have staff, maybe Mike, Michael Sui online for these projects, and maybe Michael needs to be unmuted?
No, I'm unmuted.
Can you hear me? We hear you, Michael, thank you. Okay. Thanks, Michael.
Okay, good morning, everybody. Continuing projects, we have T45, which is replacement of our bus wash at the Serrato Valhalla Garage. That is replacement of the two-bake bus wash, and that's an original bus wash going back to 1994, so it is in need of replacement, so we can keep our buses nice and clean. Next project, T0048, Central Maintenance Roof, Facility Roof Alterations. That is cost escalation, that's an ongoing project, which, as many others, has been backlogged, so we just need a little bit more money to get it completed next year. T0070 is site improvements, also up at the Valhalla-Serrato Garage. That is cost escalation, that primarily will rehab the detention ponds and the parking lots up at the garage, which, again, are original back to 1994, and are both in need of, of repair and replacement. which, again, are original back to nineteen ninety four and are both in need of, of repair and replacement. T zero zero nine G, this is our ongoing paratransit van replacement project. We replace about twenty vehicles every year in an ongoing cycle. Because there are approximately a little over a hundred vehicles, so we do between twenty and twenty-five a year that, that we replace as a regular duty cycle replacement. And on the next slide, we have two new projects. First one is T zero zero one U. This is replacement of our thirty foot buses. The funding requested for twenty twenty one will be for specifications and procurement related services and also for charging infrastructure as, as we initiate the procurement of electric buses. These thirty footers are going to be primarily our first electric buses that we, that we explore. And the next project, T zero zero one Y, this is replacement of our forty foot coach buses. There's twenty-seven of the coach buses. These are the ones that run down to Manhattan or do the, the longer commuter runs up to Putnam County. And the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one request is for specification preparation and procurement related services for the replacement of those buses. And that's it for transportation buses.
Hi, this is Rob. The, if you just go back to the bus wash, this is an interior and exterior bus wash. Is that correct?
No, it's interior.
It's interior. And, and has the, you know, has the COVID pandemic changed the specifications of what's required on that bus wash? And is there an addition, like any need for additional funds on that?
Oh, I'm sorry. I think I missed a news. This is per exterior washing of the buses?
Exterior, so it's not interior. Okay.
The facility itself is inside the garage, but it's to wash the outside of the buses. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
But that being said, the COVID procedures have been used from day one and beyond. We were, we were cleaning buses before. Was thought of and required with, with Liberty Lines to protect their staff too. So we've been involved from day one, you know, daily cleanings of those buses on the inside and protecting the drivers. The first three rows are sectioned off. Every other seat is satin. It was, it's, it's recommended. And you also have to wear a mask on, on the bus if you're a passenger, and we're still under free rides right now and, and rear entry on the bus. So what, when we get all the, all the plexiglass shields that we're currently working on, we will, to protect the drivers, those three rows will be available, and then we will be able to start collecting fares at some point later on this year.
Thank you.
Now we're going to the airport. I'll run through these projects, but again, Public Works can jump in if any questions. So six projects are requested at the airport in twenty twenty one, are the continuation of existing projects. A O one O two, Snow Equipment Storage Building, two hundred and forty thousand dollars. This is cost escalation for a new snow equipment storage facility at the north end of the airport. A O one eighteen, Runway sixteen thirty-four Rehab. This is also a cost escalation, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for environmental planning and preparation of N I P A review for the pavement rehab of sixteen thirty-four. And that, the larger project also includes the installation of shoulders, edge lighting and signage. A O one twenty-three, North Complex Domestic Water Service for two million fifty thousand dollars. That's for improvement to the water service at the North Complex, including replacement of the aging ten inch portion of the service with twelve inch pipes, which will increase the reliability of water service in that, in that area of the airport. A O one thirty-three, Rehabilitation of Taxiway L. This will also fund the, fund environmental planning and N I P A review for the Taxiway L Rehab Project from Runway eleven thirty-nine to Runway sixteen Approach End. The project, the larger project includes the pavement restoration, rehab of taxiway lighting and signage and installation of taxiway markings. A O one thirty-six is the removal of Runway eleven twenty-nine and sixteen thirty-four obstructions. This is one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for environmental planning and N I P A reviews for the removal of hazardous conditions that could impact safe arrivals and departures at the airport.
Bill, are those obstructions both onsite and offsite?
Commissioner Grecian, are you online for that question?
Yes, I am. The answer is yes, and they're in a different state, as we all know. So, yeah. So the obstructions we're all talking about are trees. I'm getting some feedback here?
Yeah.
Anyway, so it's a, it's a glide path. It's a, it's frankly parabolic, you know, and it slopes up and anything that goes through that, that, that plane, that imaginary plane, we, we've done surveys out there. We're continuing to do surveys out there to know exactly where the trees are. They go above that. We, we trim those. Most of it's in the D E P property, and we've had permission from them to, if we have to cut a tree, they're taking it all the way down with certain types of trees, or some trees can be trimmed without, without any issue. But yeah, it's a longstanding issue with the state of Connecticut on, on certain areas that are problematic.
Yes, is there any impact or what's the impact on the noise complaints of the area residents? Any impact for this runway projects?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand. You mean in general or just the, the, the tree topping?
No, I was, the taxiway and the runway obstructions together, is there going to be any impact on the noise, you know, occurring in the surrounding area?
No, I, I don't foresee the, the trees being an issue and the, all the taxiway is, it's, it's basically the same footprint, and it has to do with more safety. With Taxiway L, there'll be a fill it, you know, a little, if you're going, you know, from one taxiway to the runway, you know, it's, they're going to make a smoother transition, but no, they're, what's going to impact that is the number of planes coming and the type of planes coming. That, that's the main, and, and the path they run, and generally, they always, they, the weather depend, the weather points you in certain directions, and certain directions are always going to be, are always going to be in the same place just due to the orientation of, of the runways.
Okay, thank you. So no improvement anticipated from any of this?
No, 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 I can't, no, I could never profess any improvement. No, but no, no degradation either.
Go on, Bill. Bill?
Sorry, I was jumping off on my mute to keep the, keep it healthy. A O forty-two C, Stormwater Management Program, eight point seven million dollars. This is for construction and construction management of the dredging of Stormwater Basin A, the construction of four bays at both Basins A and B, and associated relocation of inlet piping. And that's in the southwest portion of the airport property. And the next page, one new project at the airport, A O one eleven, five million dollars for natural gas conversion. This is for the conversion of heating, air conditioning and ventilation systems at various airport buildings to natural gas, as well as the removal of existing petroleum fuel storage, fuel storage tanks at the airport.
Yeah, have any more ecological methods of heating been explored than national, natural gas?
Yes, this is Hugh Grecian. Again, yeah, we're always looking at different types of development, but right now, this is the technology we're moving forward with. Gas is still the most efficient. What we don't like to see is, is tanks leaking. So that's another main driver with this. We need to replace these tanks. We've already done this on the west side for the most part. Most of this gas conversion now is going to be on the east side of the, of the airport. And for, you know, just, everybody knows where that is. That's, that's, that's the side where the entrance road is. So those buildings coming down, that's where, that's where we're concentrating on, on this conversion. And, but even with the gas conversion, there, there are, there are methods to use that more efficiently. So, and of course, we feel, we, we, we do all codes. I mean, the bottom line is, is the state energy code, but we try to always improve on that. If we can put panels up, we'll put panels up. That's on all county facilities. We're always looking, we have a whole, a whole program on, you know, on energy efficiency, working with Peter Mercard, with the County Execs Office, how the vehicles, down to everything we touch, we, we look at the best technology.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we're jumping to another department, Department of Environmental Facilities. I believe we've got C J Gelardo online. I think he's going to talk to the projects.
Yep. Excuse me, Bill. It's Kathy O'Connor. I'm sorry. I just need to ask, is there, do you have a quorum? If I leave, I have to get to another event, another program, another conference call.
Yes, we have a quorum, and we're not anticipating any votes today, so that, I think we're okay.
Okay, I apologize for leaving.
Thank you very much, Kathy.
Have a lovely weekend. Thank you. Bye. Bye-bye.
Great. Okay, C J, oh, I'm sorry, Michael, if you want to move that slide up to there. Great, thank you very much.
Hello, everyone. My name's C J Gelardo. I'm the Capital Program Coordinator for the Department of Environmental Facilities. We're going to start with our solid waste, our Refuge District. We have project R D zero two one for, this is, this project is a phased multi-year purchase of vehicles, particularly tractors and trailers to, to, to transport the, the, the solid waste to the, from the transfer stations to the, to the facility in peak scale. We do, we do, we will be looking into the, the recommendations that were made earlier about lowering, the low, the low rise cabs and the guards, the flaps on the side. You know, if, if they're available, if we can do that, we will look into that. Typically try to replace the oldest track, tractors, uh, the trailers, I should say, about ten per year usually is what we try to do. Advance the slide. Okay, great. So that, that's the only twenty twenty one project for the Refuge District. Now we're moving on to sewer and water. Project S M zero zero two is part of the Outfall Jetty Rehabilitation Project. It says due to cost escalation. I guess you could call it that. Really what this is, is a supplemental project that the New York State D E C, the Department of Environmental Conservation, and the U S Army Corps of Engineers has required us to, 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 to provide some tidal wetland mitigation nearby to where our original Outfall Jetty project, that's planned to start later this year. So we're going to start on the actual project to rehab the jetty, and then this mitigation is, is to help improve the, the general area of, of the harbor. So this, this, this one point five million dollars is for design, construction administration and construction costs to do that required mitigation. Wetland mitigation. The next project, S M zero nine five, Pumping Station Rehabilitation. This, this request is for construction funding for the rehabilitation of the Fenimore Road and also the Weaver Street Pumping Stations, and also the design and construction administration funding for the rehabilitation of the Saxon Woods Pumping Station. We're gonna, you're gonna see a few of these come up and support. So basically, what, the pumping stations are continuous operation twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. So as such, they experience significant wear and tear and require a full rehabilitation approximately every twenty years. The rehabilitation work is all encompassing, including upgrade, repair or replacement of mechanical, plumbing, structural, architectural, electrical control systems. The roof will be replaced. Flood mitigation measures will be taken if necessary as recommended by a prior vulnerability study that the department undertook. So I don't know if I need to repeat that every time. So just so you know, when, when a pumping station project comes up, that's what it is. Every, every about twenty years, we have to, we have to rehab these. They're, they just workhorses. So the next project, S N R ninety-five, again, is a pumping station rehabilitation program. And that specific request is for the design and construction administration funding for the rehabilitation of the Fifth Avenue Pumping Station. We have about, just so you know, there's about forty-three, there is forty-three pumping stations throughout the county that we own and operate. So just on a continuing cycle, we just constantly are rehabilitating them. The next project is S O S zero five, the Austining Wastewater Treatment Plant Twin Feeder Aerial Cable. This project is to replace some large electrical cables from, from Con Edison. Then we take over at a certain pole. We have to replace those, those cables and the poles, and that, those supply the main electrical power to the Austining Wastewater Treatment Plant. They'll, they'll be replaced in a staged manner to, to keep, keep the plant in operation and keep power to the plant. And there'll also be some new underground cables and manholes to connect the, the power to the existing Con Ed distribution switchgear that's on the ground. The next project is S O S eighty-five, Sewer Rehabilitation Project for the Austining District. So that request is going to fund the cleaning and inspection of the thirty-six inch diameter Austining, Austining North Intercepting Sewer located along Water Street between Broadway and Central Avenue in the Village of Austining. We have to, we have to clean that line out every, I think it's three years because there, there were issues with clogging, and we realized that we have to get the leaves out of there, and, and it's just a configuration of that piping. It, it, it needs that cleaning every, about three years. And, and that project is also going to fund the relining of the Chemise Cove Force Main, which is in need of, of relining due to some, due to some damage caused by grit and just stones and rocks that have, that, that scoured some of the inside of that pipe. Moving on to the next project.
I'm sorry, I just have a question on, on S O eighty-five?
Yes.
So the seven fifty, is that something that you're saying a good chunk of is going to be used every three years? We have to throw in seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the cleaning of that, of that section of pipe?
Roughly, roughly half of that is going to be used for the lining of the Chemise Cove Force Main. That, that, they're both in the Austining Sewer District, so the money comes out of this one account that is for all of our outside, of the fence, out, the, the sewer collection system as opposed to in, at the plant. So this, this account does more than one thing. It's for ma- maintenance repair of the, of the actual sewers out in the street. So it really only costs about half of that to do the, to do the cleaning and inspection.
And, and, and in addition, this is, this is Vincent Kupicki, Commissioner of D E F. We, we do perform inspections. So if we do an inspection and we realize that it's very little debris in the main, then, then we don't have to, to clean it. So it not, does not necessarily have to be done, you know, every three years, but we do, we will do an inspection.
Thank you.
Yeah, the inspection's actually required by, by the state. But right, but if it's clean, then we don't, that's a good point. Okay, so moving on to S S O S ninety-five. That's another pumping station rehab programming. Like I said, there's going to be a few of them. This one in particular is construction funding for the rehabilitation of the Archville and the Country Club Lane Pumping Stations. Try to combine some of the, the pumping stations that are in the same district. It helps to, you know, save some money for the, you know, the efficiency of, of one design and, and doing it all together. The next project is S P C zero three. So that's the Portchester Treatment Plant Electrical System Upgrade. The, the Portchester is in need of electrical and also H V A C upgrades that, so that's actually two projects that are going to be split coded and combined. The, the H V A C portion has already been approved and funded. This is the, this is the funding. We wanted to spread it out a little bit. This is the funding for the electrical portion of that project. So the, it's a construction funding. So it's going to replace electrical switch gears, electrical panel board, panel boards, motor control centers, emergency generator, all, all equipment that's, that's starting to reach the end of its useful life. Combining with the H V A C project, again, is efficiency and a cost saving. Next project, S P C thirty-seven is the Portchester Wastewater Treatment Plant Bulkhead Rehabilitation. This is a construction escalation for funding the replacement of the steel and stone bulkheads along the Byram River. The bulkhead experiences significant deterioration due to the salinity and wave action of the Long Island, Long Island sounds influence on the Byram River. The next project is S P C thirty-eight, Portchester Wastewater Water, Water, Water Resource Recovery Facility, Primary Settling Tank Rehabilitation and Miscellaneous Improvements. This, this is This this is construction funding for the structural rehabilitation of the primary settling tank involving the replacement of the settling tank influence channel roof slabs, influence channel span beams, and primary sludge piping system. In addition, a masonry wall, stone, stones will be re-installed and repointed as necessary.
Bill, Bill, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, Richard.
Two things. One, on the bulkhead rehabilitation at the Portchester Plant. The village is doing bulkhead rehabilitation along the Byram just up from that plant. And I would hope that environmental facilities can coordinate with the village engineer so that we're talking about who's doing bulkhead rehabilitation.
Secondly. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you're broken up. I can't hear you.
Okay, the village of Portchester is doing. Okay, let me try again. The village of Portchester is doing bulkhead rehabilitation further up on the Byram River. So I would hope that environmental facilities can coordinate with the village with their bulkhead rehabilitation plan.
There's, there's no need to coordinate these projects. This will be maybe an information trade only that we're doing their project and they're doing, you know, we're doing our project, they're doing their project.
But but their project.
But their but their project has nothing to do with our project.
Well, it does, in effect, their project is based upon the county $20 million expenditure to build that bulkhead. And there's been a lot of discussion of whose responsibility is, was it the county, is it the engineer, is it GNS, is it the village?
I'm so, I'm sorry, I can barely hear you.
The village bulkhead was built with county money. There are issues related to the county of the village bulkhead.
Richard, I'm going to correct that.
But that but that that is a totally separate project.
Only a portion of the bulkhead was built with money from the county. The first portion, the steel portion that's still standing, that was the portion that was funded with county money. The rest.
The entire walkway was.
Was not county money. It was an agreement with the county that we would be helping to pay off the some of the costs associated with that.
I am only asking that you coordinate.
We will, we will exchange information.
Okay, thank you. The second thing is, there are many, there's a whole bunch of projects. Can you do all of these projects in 2021? You have the capacity to do all of them in 2021?
We're going to try.
Okay. Think I'm up to SPK fourteen. This, it's not, it's it's not really a cost escalation as it indicates on that slide. It's actually a second phase to this project. So it's not a $15 million cost escalation. It's 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 required to replace some heating and odor control and aeration equipment in the tanks and in in the in the administration building at the at the plant in order to improve the process. SPK twenty, Force Main Rehabilitation Pico Sewer District. This is design and construction administration funding for the replacement of the Water Street Force Main. The work will include installation of approximately 5,100 feet of 24-inch ductile iron force main piping to replace the existing 16-inch and 12-inch force main. The project's going to be combined and split code with project SBK ninety five, which is the rehabilitation of that with the Water Street Pumping Station. So we'll we'll rehab the pumping station and the force main that connects to it at the same time, again, for for efficiency and cost and cost savings. The next project, SPS zero seven, repair and upgrade of Alexander Street Influence Structure. This is an escalation because we we had some issues getting easements, but that's been resolved, but that we had to pay, we have to now pay for the easements and pay for the 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 inch, the inflation, the escalation at the time that passed and prices go up. So this is a, this project will fund the inspection, cleaning, and structural repair to the influence structure at Alexander Street, which directs sewage to the North Yonkers Pumping Station. And this project will also include the replacement of three influence sluice gates. Project, the next project is SPS zero eight. That's the North Yonkers Pumping Station, 54-inch main surge chamber. Another project that was held up by easements, but we now got that taken care of and we're going to get it out out the door, which is why this is considered a this is is a construction escalation. Construction funding for this project will install three to five small surge chambers. That's dependent on the 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 results of the ongoing analysis and design on that 54-inch force main, which connects to the North Yonkers Pumping Station. The line goes from the North Yonkers Pumping Station to the Yonkers Joint Treatment Plant. These search chambers will absorb absorb severe changes in pressure that the force main is subject to, which will prevent the force main, protect the force main from damage and prevent potential sewage discharges. The next project is SSN zero two, Sawmill B two trunk sewer spur extension. This is construction funding for a new section of the trunk sewer approximately 5,500 feet long in the town of Newcastle. The new spur will start in Hunts Lane near the Sawmill River Parkway and extend north within Quaker Street. This will allow approximately 800 parcels to abandon their septic systems in the future by connecting to the spur in the future. Reducing the number of septic systems is a goal of the county to improve water quality. Next project.
Can you tell me this sewage spur, the people who would be abandoning their septic tanks, where would their sewage be directed towards?
Would be directed eventually to the Yonkers Joint Treatment Plant. This spur will, this spur will not in itself connect any parcels. That would have to be done later by the town. So this this project in particular does not add any single person to to the Yonkers Joint Treatment Plant until in the future that they connect on their own.
Yes, but it makes it far more likely, almost inevitable.
I mean, that is, that is the.
That's that's correct.
The intent is to is to add these people to the Yonkers Joint Treatment Plant.
Okay, and can you tell me which of the other Yonkers repairs includes implementation of the recently completed odor mitigation study?
I'm I'm sorry, do you, I'm sorry, could you you repeat that?
Yes, can you tell me which of the other, the other two? Or actually, there are three, one with electric. Will any of this move us towards implementation of the results of the odor mitigation study that we have not seen yet but has been completed according to our information?
I think we have, CJ, I think we have projects. CJ, hold on, hold on. I I think we have projects that are going to be coming up that are the odor control projects that you're you're talking about.
Well, we, they're not in this presentation because that money's already been funded and approved. There is, there is a project in design right now to to to, yeah, to to implement odor control measures from that study. It's SY zero zero nine. It is, it is not part of this because the construction funding, well, it's in design right now. So the construction funding, I could tell you right now. Right, the construction funding is already is already there because we, that's how we knew that that critical that was, so we didn't wait around. As soon, as soon as that project is done with design, which we're hoping is going to be the beginning part early next year, we can go right into construction. We we know, we know that's that's an important project and we're we're working on it. So that was, that was the trunk sewer spur. So now we're on.
SSM seventy four.
Seventy four, thank you. Okay. So this, this again is is really more of a phase two that was kind of always always planned. This is rehabilitation of the Tarrytown Pumping Station. The Tarrytown Pumping Station is one of only three manned pumping stations. I mentioned earlier, we, the county has 43 pumping stations. Three of them are larger and manned. The rest are smaller and unmanned. So the first phase of this project, which is complete, accounted for the mechanical and operation, operational upgrades and rehabilitation, the pumps. That's all done. This fact, the second phase, this, what we're asking for now is the construction funding for the second phase, which will provide updated office locker and bathroom facilities for the personnel, including a women's locker room and bathroom facility, which the station currently does not have. So that's, that's a great upgrade. The next project, SW zero one, SW SW ten, Asset Management Program for DEF Facilities. This is funding for a study that will conduct a condition assessment and the implementation of an asset management system at the Maranic Water Resource Recovery Facility in order to provide effective asset replacement planning and prioritization with the goal of reducing the impacts and costs of equipment downtime. The next project is SW eleven, Rehabilitation of the Yorktown Maintenance Facility. This is a funding request for phase two construction of the rehabilitation of the Yorktown Maintenance Garage. The second phase will include replacing the existing septic system with a low-pressure sewer system. The new sewer system will be connected to the Yorktown Sewer System that conveys its sewage to Peak Scale Plant for Treatment. It will, it'll, the project will include paving of the facility's gravel driveway and storage yard and miscellaneous site work improvements such as curbs for stormwater drainage. The next project is SW seventy Flow Monitoring Program. This is an inspection and monitoring quest for, and this project will fund the monitoring and enforce enforcement phases following the sewer system evaluation survey. This project is designed to identify and monitor the inflow and infiltration problem, which currently burdens each of the districts. The 2021 request will fund installation of flow monitoring devices in manholes in the Austin Sewer District along the Hudson River. The next project is SY zero two eight, the Yonkers Joint Treatment Plant Evaluation of Plant Electric and Lighting Systems. This request is for design and construction administration funding. Earlier phase this project evaluated the condition and useful life of all major components of the plant electrical system, as well as the exterior and interior plant lighting. This next phase of the project for the, and what this request is for is to design it, design the the replacement of this age of the equipment that was identified as aging in 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 the study. And where practical equipment will also be relocated above the the flood elevation as a flood mitigation measure. The next project is SY zero three seven, Yonkers Joint Treatment Plant Bulkhead Rehabilitation. This request is for design and CA funding for the repair and rehabilitation of the Yonkers Joint Cellular Bulkhead Wall that separates the plant from the Hudson River. This this particular section of the bulkhead and this particular project is to is to repair damage that incurred in in the year 2000, there was a collision with a barge, which damaged this section. But emergency repairs are made at that time, but now basically 20 years later, that that section is starting to fail again and the, and it caused the bulkhead to settle. So this is to repair that. And this project may be combined and split coded with another flood mitigation project that we have, and that would likely raise the height of the wall. So we're going to coordinate that. So if the wall is going to be raised, we'll make sure that the foundation, the base of the wall is strong enough and big enough to handle that additional height. The next project, SY zero nine five, another pumping station upgrade program. This request is construction funding for the rehabilitation of the Main Street and Ludlow Street Pumping Stations. And again, you know, I explained the reasons why we need to do this. That's it for the sewer projects. And then there's a handful of water projects before we get into the new projects.
Okay, wait, this is Richard. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I want to go back to the odor control mitigation for the Yonkers project.
Sure.
Is that SY forty two B?
That, that is another project that we have in store. We have that money shown in outer years so that we can do even more in the future if necessary. But we have another project, SY zero zero nine, that we've already done three phases of odor mitigation, and this will be the fourth phase. That's what I was saying earlier is in design. That's SY zero zero nine. That project is on its way, like we said, but the design, we should hope to be completed, the early portion of of next year and start construction next year. And we hope that that'll, that'll address most of the issues. And if not, that forty two B was set up a long time ago as, just in case we need to do even.
Yeah, exactly. Like CJ, yeah, see, like CJ said, that's that's for additional work, depending on the results of we get from SY zero zero nine.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, this is, this is Rob Aaron. I just, in any of the work on the the Yonkers pumping station or the facility itself, is there any, is it, has there any been any discussion about incorporating the the right of way for the Hudson River Greenway?
That I'm aware of.
We have to look at that.
Because, I mean, you're building a bulkhead. It might be a great time to put a some kind of deck on top of it.
Oh, you mean like a, like for public access?
Yes.
No.
Okay.
No, we would not run that.
Yeah, I respectfully request that 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 be done because it's sort of the stumbling block for the building of the Greenway. So, thanks.
Okay. The 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 next project is WD one zero three. That's County Water District Number One, Alternate Water Supply. So this request is for design and construction administration funding with an alternate water supply connection at the southern end of the 48-inch Kentsico Bronx Pipeline. The project will involve installation of a new 54-inch pipeline from the New York City Water Supply near the Yonkers Bronx border at the southern end of our 48-inch pipeline at McLean Avenue in the city of Yonkers. This project is required and time-sensitive because New York City has announced they plan to begin a series of maintenance shutdowns of the Delaware Aqueduct, which currently feeds the southern portion of the of the Kentsico Bronx Pipeline. This can, this new connection is required to provide an alternate raw water source when the Delaware, Delaware Aqueduct raw water supply is not available. Next project is WD one zero four, County Water District Number One, Chef twenty-two and Kentsico Dan Performance Maintenance. This is a construction funding request for the rehabilitation and/or replacement of various drinking water disinfection equipment and systems, including all process sampling and chemical systems, mechanical, HVAC, architectural, electrical, and control systems, and also structural and civil site improvements. And that equipment's reaching the end of its useful life and needs to be replaced. Moving on now to, and again, that's not, that's not a cost escalation. That's, this is a new project that that is, that is a there's not a mistake on the slide. This is not a cost escalation.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, CJ, on that. Yeah.
The the, I guess we can move on to the next slide. I think we're on to the new projects now. Okay. I think you went one, there you go. SBV ninety five is again another pumping station rehab program. This is for the design and construction administration funding for the rehabilitation of the Jackson Avenue Pumping Station. Again, we've kind of gone through that. So the next project, SLI zero four, is a Maranic Water Resource Recovery Facility Media and Aeration Equipment Replacement. This is a construction funding request for modifications to the aeration tank walls and sieves, replacement of the aeration tank mixers and blowers, and replacement of the biological nitrogen removal media that's located inside of the aeration tank. This work is required in order to maintain compliance with an EPA consent order. The next project is SBK ninety five, Pumping Station Rehabilitation Program. A lot of these, just so you know, they they're going to be combined. The 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 we have to, the the money isn't different. If you're seeing, if you're seeing a lot of these pumping stations, it's because we have a lot to do, but they're also, they're getting, they're getting combined where possible, again, for efficiencies, but the the money comes out of different accounts is why it keeps coming up over and over again. So this is a design and construction administration funding for the rehabilitation of the Water Street Pumping Station. And again, this one in particular, like I mentioned earlier, is going to get combined with the SBK twenty, which is the rehabilitation of the Water Street Force Main. So it'll be an all-encompassing, more cost-effective project to rehab the pumping station and the force main at the same time. The next project is SSM twenty one, Sawmill Section B Relief Sewer. Not to get confused with the the spur that we talked about earlier, this is a relief sewer. So this is a construction funding request for a new 1,600-foot relief sewer with a section of the county Sawmill Section B Sanitary Trunk Sewer, also in the town of Newcastle. where there are section of the county Sawmill Section B Sanitary Trunk Sewer, also in the town of Newcastle, so I know how that can get a little confusing. You recently, the planning board recently reviewed a CBA for the design funds of this project. This project is being expedited at the request of the town of Newcastle, the village of Mount Kisco, and the county executive's office. This is actually, when we, when we presented it to this board of legislators, it was touted, everyone agreed to, they stopped the whole meeting to say how this was a great example of all the different municipalities working together. Everybody really wanted this to get done. It's, it's pretty important. So the, the point of this pro, the project is to relieve a choke point. There's a section of, of, like I said, about one thousand six hundred feet of, of, of the sewer that, uh, the upstream and downstream sections are thirty inches, but this one section is twenty-four. So we're gonna, we're gonna keep that twenty-four section in place as additional, uh, a, a backup, I guess, and, and then the new, the new section of thirty inch will allow the whole run to be thirty inches continuously. So there's no, there's no, it minimizes the chance of any kind of backups or, or, or anything like that. It'll, it, it should all be the same, the same size. And, um, then the next project, oh, no, that's it, that's the last project. So that is the end of the DES project.
Great, and that's the, that's the end of the presentation. Uh, we're, we're gonna be incorporating some of your comments, uh, from the board into the revised planning board report. And as I mentioned at the beginning, uh, please continue to send any other comments that we'd incorporate. When we, when we send the report back to you, we'll, uh, highlight uh, new sections and we'll, we'll, we'll tell you where we've made changes. So when you do get the report, you can review those changes. And again, we'll be talking about this, the board will have it before then at the July seventh Planning Board Meeting uh, for your potential adoption, the revised report.
Does anyone have any further questions or comments? Uh, go ahead, Bill.
And that's it, thank you.
Does anyone have any additional comments, questions? I don't want to absorb.
This is Dwight. I just thought, uh, basically, it's all stuff that has to be done. There was nothing very exciting. We've got repairs, we've got upgrades to meet current standards, uh, you know, and the technological changes require constant computer upgrades, all that kind, and the vehicle purchases and everything we're doing. So I, I think, uh, everybody is, you know, we, we, we don't have major, interesting, new projects to look at. We're just taking care of what needs to be taken care of going forward, and I thought it was a very good presentation.
Anyone else have any comments? My overall comment is that it's take quite a bit of work to get all these projects out the door. It's a design and construction. Uh, the, the capacity given the way we have to work now virtually is gonna be a handicap, I think, but, uh, it's worth a try.
Right, and in, in speaking for the Capitol Work Group, if I may, uh, that, that's, uh, always on our minds, uh, you know, Robert Abmont at, and Public Works who spoke earlier is kind of at the forefront of that to making sure we, Public Works and staff and consultants squeeze these things through and with, always with an eye towards capacity and timing.
We have to remember that these, uh, uh, two hundred and whatever million dollars worth of work are in addition to the backlog of projects of almost a billion dollars that are also gonna have to move ahead. So it's not just these projects we've seen for twenty twenty-one. There's also the huge backlog that has to be taken care of as well.
Right, right. And, and, and some of these projects that you see today may in fact be, uh, pushed out to outer years, but as, as you know, the departments are noting too, um, it's also at the same time a battle against deterioration and, and pushing off projects, um, where it would cost more if you push it out to the future. So it's that balance.
Will the individual departments be prioritizing their requests as to which ones are more, most important?
Yes, they, they, they already do that, uh, as part of this, and, uh, you know, it's basically requirement that if they're, if they're requesting in twenty twenty-one, it's a priority for the, that coming year. Um, and we do request them that, that they, when they submit new projects as they're coming in, we, we have them prioritize. So when the work groups looks, when the work group looks at them this summer, uh, we have that at hand and, and go back and forth with departments as well to check on, on the priorities and the importance, uh, of the projects. And we do with that, we do that with them before they submit for May first. So we do it before May first, we discuss their priorities and what's coming in in twenty twenty-one, and we continue to do it now as we look at, again, as the budget director was saying, the overall capacity, financial capacity of the county as well as the, uh, staff capacity.
Yeah, no, this is, uh, Hugh Grecian again. To that end, I mean, we were, we're an essential department. We weren't operating under the normal, uh, you know, fifty percent rule even. We had seventy. If we, you were at home, you, you had a remote, uh, access, you had computers, thanks to IT, we activated that right away. Uh, we, you know, the essential staff has been in every day. Our operations have been in every day. Our construction never stopped. It was full-time. So we've been working very, very hard, uh, in, in Public Works. People that can come in with COVID protection have, have come in. You know, they haven't been, uh, if not, they, we've set them up at home for access with webex and with design programs. They can design from home and, and come in and talking with their section ahead. So we've been working through this because the county exec's office wants, wants jobs on the street. That's gonna help with the economy, that's gonna help keep, uh, Westchester working, and that's what we've done.
How many, how many treatment plants exist in the county?
We had seven treatment plants. And like I mentioned, forty-three pumping stations. We also have solid waste equipment, uh, facilities. We also have water facilities. There's seven plants though, three on the Hudson Riverside and four on the, on the Long Island Soundside.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just one last question. You know, I, I brought up the issue of like looking for a new revenue sources. Do any of our waste treatment plants do any kind of methane capture to try to, um, and then, you know, sell that, that methane gas?
We, we don't. We, we, we actually, we, we use it, I'm sorry, we, we use it at our plants for our, for our own uses, you know, as you can imagine, a treatment plant with the large-sized pumps, um, and, and the, and the electricity that we draw, uh, we're a, a large user. So, uh, for example, at the Yonkers plant, uh, we're putting in new AGG engines, aerobic digester gas engines, which will use the gas, the gas that we capture from the plant itself. So we'll be using that for, for our, basically for our, for our own uses. And at that point, I don't think there's really anything else to really, um, we wouldn't have much even to burn off at that point, uh, from our flares. It would be just used, you know, essentially at the plant.
So those flares will go away?
Basically, I mean, there's, you're still always gonna have them, but, um, they would, we, we're trying to look at using almost all of the gas that we generate.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, thanks all the participants for presenting the various capital projects. Uh, we have, as the screen says, until the twenty-third to get back to our staff, who will incorporate our comments in our final report. Thanks again for that. Um, I don't have any other business, Norma. Do you have any other business?
No, I just wanna say thank you to everybody for your time this morning. It's, it was greatly appreciated to really, you know, take the time to go through each of these.
Okay, well, if there is no other business, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Uh, this is Dwight, um, I make a motion to adjourn.
I have a second.
This is Holly, I'll second.
Thank you, Bill, for the roll.
All right, uh, to adjourn, votes to adjourn, uh, Richard Hyman? Bernie Tomes? Dwight Douglas?
Yes.
Daniel Finger?
Yes.
Holly Hasbrook? James Arnt?
Yes.
Reenie Toback? Reenie Toback, uh, vote to adjourn? All right, we'll move on to Robert Barron.
Yes.
Uh, Jimena Franchella, I don't see her on there. Um, Kathy O'Connor or Peter Tartaglia for Peter Tart, for Kathy O'Connor? No, I think they dropped off two. Um, Hugh Grecian?
Uh, yes.
And Vincent Kopicki?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Stay safe.
Stay safe. Thanks, everybody.